Hello, dear Mr. Scanlon. Fox News and Fox Connecticut News and WFSB, please get me off the fake conversations with you. They're also your interbranch sources, reported, confessed, demonstrated, confirmed it. They're trying to get you to pretend that it's personal between me and you because of that. To separate the other natures of organized crimes at the same time. When you involve the fake conversations with me. With you guys and fake and changed conversations with other people. Ones I never even had a word of conversation with. A Leahy family, little cowards, they have their kid on Facebook. Involved with Facebook themselves too and blocked out of that account, but they have it up there. And two other accounts, they hid what was confirmed to me on Facebook. People asking for help, they're obfuscating evidences. These are collusions with all sides of criminal and civil cases. At the same time with the names with the courts, names with the interbranch, their framing members, conjunctions to that. Conjunctions to that overt criminal enterprises and private ones, even when they're not in the same cases. Collusion slash S putting the same sequence shifts, self valued roles with name switching. Otherwise that body is sensed. Everyone is sensing for a breaching method, for example, which is some of the things. You know, with my research, you guys are forcing me to speak like this, like as you want to ask questions. Dishonestly, because what's actually recorded is that and is how and is why. All natures of investigations, investigators. And their campuses in conjunctions to them into that, they were are kept with. The difference brackets with with the difference of them more guilty or overt criminal enterprises or private ones. Or names at or next to all the conjunctions to that. Everyone's sources, they're putting the same sequence shifts at the same time self value. Or sensing anyone and changing and faking what they say. And how they get away with it is rules with predicate acts. Methods that are manifest weird how juxtaposed distinct natures and methods of organized crimes. Where are still manifest at all locations slash S in ways that nobody wanted and nobody wants. But there are exceptions when people, like for example. When people will try to debate if or if if not legitimate science spoke for New York City. Or spoke for suburbs, no with houses that were built before America's founders were born. And with even slavery and changing and faking what black people's white device communicate. Or or that body was sensed again and through our own for the breaching method. Including that body was a majority of people, including if it was anyone from any modern country. While they were founded from America to Russia to Ukraine, the suburbs are manifest the same way. In many pray, I saw a title of a YouTube video in one of the suggested videos. NATO might have just entered the war with Ukraine and Russia. This A through Z are in a semi ancient trap. That's that's by a method slash S, but everyone else is the slash S part. It keeps other things, others ourselves blamed for what it caused originally. And then with nature's demonstrations of that, it effectively propagated forced and been in all self cultivated roles. Keeping that and those demonstrations of it while keeping those demonstrations of blame on the things others ourselves. Demonstrations of him a fact, achieving nature, preaching method that nature itself shows us is one of the things true always. That they were valued as equally and constantly always true. All those crazy laws that were entrenched, northern colonies and southern colonies. Secretly distinctly and through different names and types of narratives regarding it. But secretly non distinctly northern colonies and southern colonies. Roles had already been with sustained with what no one naturally wants. And and they wanted to communicate about how some things are only natural as criminal insidiousness nature. But the names of the people, the sciences have themselves failed. Even where and how, all exceptions too, the breaching method employs exceptions, employs. So in other words, there's a Mary Scanlon. And in other words, I never met her and I'm sure she's a nice person, a great person, like Mr. Scanlon looks like a great guy. In other words, the state comptroller. But the FBI director. While being haven't been used remotely, also with other police forms and people with whiting forensics. For example, with the street, the state police, whiting forensics are confessing to me. After they already confessed to the breaching method. They have roles with countries that have been long term here. Since before America's founders were born. For that breaching method which uses differences. And roles with use slash S of differences through an ass systems tactability area. From the one that is generating the difference of the human species body. From the other species bodies of individual bodies. Individual species bodies made up of a whole bunch of individual bodies. Being generated by the identity of valuable aggression that is constantly showing us. It is not us nor them, but it is all things anyway. And why and how many prayers, not only for natural reasons now. But now hyper additionally for some reasons that are only natural as criminal insidiousness nature. Of positive reasons and or of negative. People have to defend themselves. From the negative value in each progression's acts and natures. That those internationally monitored conversations have forgiveness too because. That was even those the members, even as countries themselves, that could only be operated by the names at location areas and states now. Originally, it's still this hyper foreign, hyper archetypal criminal enterprise, if you will. The proverbial devil. The proverbial shit tune. Stay tuned. No. The Facebook page of a principal obscure nature. He was, is with more than and now with the intelligence community, with the shopping centers and with the malls. Where they where how they make confessions to citizens. Regular citizens like myself, I'm not, I'm not police force, I'm not a judge, I'm not. A prosecutor, but I reported them with delusions because they were. But also with criminally foreign influence, fact, true nature, quality aspects and natures of collusion slash S. But that is also was is also recorded how kept the outcome slash S. Only capable of being a number of people at the Britain's Superior Court have direct and indirect personal professional collusion slash S. With a Leahy family. And with with interbranch identity theft frauds and slanders and putting fake transcripts and fake motivations. Even when with truths for use not cover up their roles with predicate acts with facts methods. Originally and still used worst to facilitate overt criminal enterprises, private ones. And terrorists only capable of being if we pay attention to what we know was actually recorded to the extent we know. And and even then, the only reason we know this is because even though our founders. The only one we know the name of, we know there was founders, there were, there were founders plural. Not just James Madison with his plan. But we were directed to understand him, but he's the only one we know the name of. And we were directed to understand how the names of presidents are distinct from the names of founders. And 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 only and James Madison as a president, he still did not have free speech. So he did not have free speech as a founder, a founder too, because it was still. Not just internationally monitored conversations entrenched, not just with the order of. Overt criminal enterprises, a private ones and terrorists. And everyone collusions plural, but also a collusion slash S. With the breaching method blaming other things, others ourselves with everyone's roles with it. And through even how did you do this from before modern religious messages were already born. From off the locations only capable. Of 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 being like that device that only a species body could be. Relative to short words proper. By the identity of all things slash S at once, well, not, but anyway, it's way. You many pray, no, excuse me, I keep forgetting, in other words. But all these things were brought up at once because these are people involved with the World Trade Center and the World Trade Center attack. And people referring to the cases involved that are using that information to fish. So there are these are the World Trade Center has roles with all kinds of natures of organized crimes that no one wanted collusion slash S with. But that was is only capable of originally and still for example. And for why and how I'm noting the relativity of where and how. People are asking, forcing people outside of courts and even online. To 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 abridge their fact, achieving nature. How and why they're getting away with this is reported at predicate acts with facts, identity theft fraud slander method. At each age and nature of campuses of campus, including fire campuses and medical campuses. And the difference of that manifest where and how they have live progressions from those locations. And the difference of it there or at and next to all natures of crime scenes they have involvements with taking records on. The investigations of it used to cover up collusion slash S with natures of and methods of organized crimes. That are fluent through countries A through Z. Here Anthony, I'm not even aware, I don't have to be. I recorded them with whole predicate acts with facts methods with criminally foreign influence tactically delusions or readings of statutes of precedent. Knowingly and where and how it's. They can pretend it's not known. It's with relative delusions they have. And with the names of the people, the scientists individually grouped and together. But also there are delusions that way, but also that simultaneously. With criminally foreign influence tactically delusion draw back achieving nature, quality aspects and natures of collusion slash S. Also through all the that originally and still to keep from discernment. To keep all those collusions from the past active, you know, when valuing active, they have to value having been. Well, that's how it always was. See, you guys are quoting statutes and precedents. While as collusions with the principles of our founders, communications to us replace. Uses of truths to lie with that about that is you were child abused at campuses A through Z and or the difference of it. This is part of a trinity. Because it has relativity. Slash hyper relativity to that which is generating the species body. To that which is generating the parts of itself that should, for example, the part of the future. That even if it never gets here. We already could discern its body as the body of the season. Even if they never get here again. Earth's a special difference they come with. Our own hyper additionally for how it is hyper additional nature. But as its system here, as how it communicates, how we could discern its identity to an extent. It's but how it comes with its complete identity, identity is complete identity relationship to itself. Equally valued and the value of that equally valued but contained. Distinctly from the rest of how that same method is distinctly from the rest of its complete identity. Just like your your identity is shown this, where how your complete identity. Is the way the parts of your 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 complete identity are. But then further a distinct way, a further distinct, non distinct and simultaneous slash hyper simultaneous nature. Way as a semi nature relationship. To itself where it's the only semi nature. That is also positive onto itself all of all ways, or else we could discern. With finite groups. Or progressive tells. But now here long have been cast preemptive spells. The nature of the bait contains quality aspects and nature. For example, I never met, I don't know anything about those two people. That escaped, that were reported to have escaped from the Clinton correct, the Clinton correctional facility. And I believe Clinton, Connecticut. I didn't get to see the rest of the news article with the control, Mr. Mr. I forgot, I forgot the name. Scanlon and again, I never saw on school, I never saw around a Mary Scanlon, I don't know her. And Joshua Julian had his name repeated to me by a by a Mark Violet. Who is one of the people who sought me alone, also with a with a alone, but with a one or other, a Justin Govinsky. To make confessions and demonstrations to me. And then delayed though, and then I found out their roles with with. People in my area that and that used to be involved with the intelligence community. And overt criminal enterprise, private ones, all these countries in the news. And ways and using methods. That have that were used before our founders were born. And as timed collusion slash S. Not by accident. With names of families from the bordering countries at the same time. With all the ones involved with the World Trade Center attack personally involved with those same ones in the bordering states. Where they had timed collusion slash S, plenty fake letters, changing fake digital evidences. Uh Hugh Ogden is one of the ones recorded, confessed, demonstrated, confirmed. Haven't been forced, checked, turned, persuaded to collusion slash S with intelligence families. Foreign and domestic from off the campus with a Joshua 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 Straker. I don't know if that's his real name, I, he wasn't in my grade. He's one of the ones that that they're making, they 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 recorded themselves trying to make it look like a timing where I'm going to be. And make it look like we had a word of conversation at all. No words, fake ties, fake nature of ties to people at Trinity College with the dean Alfred, I don't know what he said to him yet. A number of girls and little kids and adult ones. And women, men and women make confessions tied to him with this. And their roles with some untimely deaths and people on my street involved with them at Trinity College increasingly. As ones involved with Central Connecticut State University at the same time. And as ones involved with their extended family members. At the World Trade Center next to it and the court next to it. With all with the court itself and all sides of the criminal and civil cases. And the news at the same time with the same sequence shifts, the same collusion slash S. The same people involved with differences brackets. These same people further involved with the principal child abuse leader of kids and ones years before that. And the ones involved with that, involved with all kinds of natures of identity theft frauds, slanders, fake ties, fake nature, type fake motivations. Their motivations are not even the real ones that they're directed to hide. For how they have roles, all these different countries together. No words, there's a Mr. Murphy, he was a nice man, but in other words, some, some girl told on me to him one time. And she's for, she's one of the ones further involved with the intelligence community with a Lance Cuddy. And with more child abuse leaders of kids and foreign and domestic intelligence. And they've recorded fast, I never had a word of conversation with Lance Cuddy, never saw him on campus in my life. He has roles, she also brought up Park Street with others too. And Park Street has roles with more educators involved with foreign and domestic. With predicate acts and with predicate acts methods against each age and nature of of person at all locations slash S. Then further with the campuses and then further with the relativity back to our locations again. This is a conscious. You know. Worse than war crimes, organized crime method. Against difference slash S and of the of the relativity of it. For example, where where there are opposites. There was also the difference equally valued as a trinity. Inside the rest of its complete identity relationship to itself distinctly, but not while non distinctly. I mean, hyper distinctly. While while hyper non distinctly. And the value of that only increasing here. Equally as value, or as it is forced from here as a negative identity of relationship to itself. But through it, for the relativity of how to discern it through its system natures. That which does not leave out why and how we have black people's whites of eyes. From subjects like slavery, not separated from what the witch trials were about. From why and how that witch trials place, there's a witch trials place right next to Webb House. Now renamed from why and how it is now renamed the Webb Stevens Museum. Still employed with sense within that sense and sensibilities by that collusion slash S by that. Still being and haven't been used to communicate other for our founders. Then they communicated for to have communicated for those places and for ourselves. And for that breaching method that we were supposed to understand first. That had been sustained simultaneously against the Native Americans before George, before Columbus sailed the ocean blue. And we're supposed to understand that the bodies involved with that as individuals, groups and together. How it had already been sustained upon themselves, the same hyper foreign method. See, this is the foundation of the suits and ties counters and collusion. Agreeing to leave out, you know, forced, checked, turned, persuaded, tortured. To leave out details, the relativity, the use slash S of the differences. Of the overt criminal enterprise, private ones, even when real. Even when they're killing people in New York City. They had, they had predicate acts with facts, sustained method slash S sustained upon themselves. And they were sensed through themselves. Anyone, even if they're a majority of people, even if every New Yorker together. As the ones not speaking with the databases. That's some, I'm just asking, in other words, they're putting faith and change and it has manifest styles of logic, natures of logic. Increasingly valuing and having value. How the the sciences share an identity and is inseparable from where and how it's separate. It can be its relative slash hyper relative anytime we have the proper syntax regarding any critical subject especially. Especially differentially too, everything's especially differentially. Because of how it shows us the difference between the hyper invisible but still discernible. And the invisible but still discernible. As how it shows us its identity, complete identity, complete identity of relationship to itself. To an extent slash S. And and to the. No words. But no words, so on Facebook, Facebook has roles. I believe there's one person that was an ad on television with the name Celeste Wells. She's one of the people that they they were influenced to make it look, make it look that we had ties to each other. And lie about their motivations for why and how and let other people do it with former director of the FBI, Robert Luskin. Involved with Facebook. With since before Facebook was Facebook. With the with the databases side of campuses, intern intra campuses, people that don't know each other. Increasingly people like that that made fake ties influenced by others by timing where I was going to walk and you'll never see him again. There are increasingly people tied to bodies, don't bring spots. And people in my fourth grade class, for example, distinctly from my fifth grade class, my sixth grade class. Who were influenced from off the campuses to pretend fake things and people on all sides of my house. From other areas. Now, this is impositions upon them and upon each. Someone must teach pre speech, get them on paper, one name and secrets because they have people from other areas involved too. Distinctly with threats with guns. And with poisons from the police as people involved grouped too with the other branches of the government. Former director of the FBI, Robert Luskin, before the World Trade Center attack. He has and has had collusion slash S with Harper Courts in the Britain's Superior Court, family members. With an officer Hunter, he is increasingly involved with people on Park Street. Also with doctors involved with, you know, healthcare systems. And and at the same time with the government, people with badges who are doctors too. Putting fake transcripts in databases collusion slash S with all natures of crime scenes. Because of cover up some of the rules with differences racketeering worse than war crimes, worse than racketeering itself. Like see, so we have means because by nature itself, but we have to stay, be led by whiteness. True always not, you know, in other words. They don't have the right to fish between things they they claim proven or or even. You know, or in other words, to force people not to speak about details. And hold predicate acts methods or predicate acts, otherwise they sense us and change and fake what we we say. Increasingly the difference of the guilt of names at campuses or next to them. Is involved too with identity theft frauds, slanders, acting for others to plant fake evidence. Of, you know, or to pretend to perceive fake instances where and how. They have to cover up how the courts act collusion slash S with all natures of crime scenes. And all natures of criminals at each age, they have collusion, changing and faking everything because there are a whole bunch of different countries involved with those family members. Now they have to pretend and say, oh, that's because we have these problems with the world and that's that. The more and more we have problems because we have our founders slandered, we have American history told the way the breaching method forced it told. They had to classify it for themselves and for us. To appreciate why and how our founders did not have free speech, even once he was a president too, James Madison still didn't have free speech. That's principle to understand how and why George Washington was tortured and extorted. We were directed to to be honest about that, it would have brought up how he was counter extorted too. By James Madison's plan and the founders behind him in that plural. It would have brought, you know, then we would appreciate properly. Why and how it was named Webb House. And we would with no love, with no definite article before the the name Webb House. And now it's renamed the Webb Stevens Museum. Now there is now there are a ray of people with opinions, things like that. And one thing they do is have styles of pretending that people have opinion. When we're speaking about unchanging principles. George, James Madison's counter extortion plans behind and their roles, including with George Washington with that plan. But no one had free speech, we also had that to classify for ourselves. And people pretend that is debatable. And while how they're getting away with pretending that's debatable. Is while how, is while they're and is how. They're getting away with valuing criminally foreign influence, fact, achieving nature, quality aspects and nature. It wasn't a T tax. That caused, you know, people would try to rebel and then, you know. Then they. They're going to be a unity, everyone or the what those internationally monitored conversations did. Was measure, maintain everyone syntactically collusion slash S therefore physically. Against themselves and against everyone else to an extent. Slash S. And it had already been sustained roles without, otherwise everyone was in trouble. And that already hurt, had everyone hurt themselves and others, collusions to make styles. Of logic, of natures of logic. As syntax, as functions, roles, abridged. From. That which is capable of reporting to any, even anyone else to be proper by the constitution unabridged. Marbury versus Madison and why and how we have rights that are too numerous to have to list. Let alone though witch trial, let alone though modern courts and police forms in. And police forms in their sources and inter branch family. And the conjunctions to them and their state offices originally instilled collusion slash S being and haven't been. Predicated acts with facts methods way worse than they put little kids in jails for. And in other words, all kinds of natures and methods of organized crimes. And styles needs and natures only capable of pretending other with that. At countries A through Z. Here Anthony, we can discern how they are and have been. Self valued rules with systems. Ta- with logic and with the nature of logic, you know, reality syntax regarding our systems tactical territory. From, from what could afford to be proper with short words by how and why, we are a, a different species body. Of all, a whole bunch of individual bodies. By that which is generating all group differences. Now see, I will, but, but we, we, we could be other systems. Like the humanity voicings. A through Z. They have been through systems other. Than humanity voicings by this volume science. Showing us other species, individual species by different species bodies. All made up each one of them by a whole bunch of individual bodies. We are being shown how what is individual. Is distinct from what is plural. As itself. Per how it shows us. Per all that we're examining that goes into how it is functional. Being hyper addition, hyper. Invisible but still discernible distinctly from how it is invisible but still discernible. The breaching method already showed the branches of government. They asked questions to themselves even. And too, they went back and forth with questions in courts. And subject treatments. That were already used to keep self valued rules of predicate acts with facts methods. Plural. And also individually, again relative to the humanity voicings. For example. And where, where, how we're, where it is simultaneous slash hyper simultaneous, for example. We don't leave out the, 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 the subject of that preaching method. Sickly distinctly against Native Americans. Against themselves too, cause it was forced everyone from systems tactic with now everyone. The whole earth is tactically de-natured. The most beautiful spots left are, are also landscape theater tactically de-natured. Now I remember seeing worms, like for example, people don't like to hear about worms, but. There were reports, I'm gonna show some videos, I'm gonna do a separate video on there. Regarding. What they call a jumping worm or, or an invasive worm, and they're calling it Asian. And maybe it is. Maybe it is not, but. It might be too, just imbalance because too long we have been taking away the leaves. The grass. We have not been feeding the soil that did the other types of worms. Cause there are, there were, there were worms like that years ago. But then it went there, there came a time. Like a few decades ago. They started dying, you know, they were starting to huddle less and less and you started seeing less worms in the bottles. There used to be, you used to be able to dig and it would be different kinds of worms, and, and like just by every shovel full. Usually. Then they changed the nature of the soil across my house, there used to be a pond too, all dried up, but in other words. For example. And see, when they try to do science like this. The people get things wrong, but sometimes the science gets things wrong and the difference of that too, no. That was, is also exploited. And no matter who's responsible for divinness is also because. That's because of, um. The hyper foreign. A human fact, human nature, breaching method is manifest at countries A through Z. And I'm calling it a hyper foreign. Because we recorded that and how it's a method and roles with it. That, 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 well, for example, a human fact, human nature, breaching method again, that's one of the things that true always. The laws that were sickly distinctly against Native Americans, sickly distinctly against the colonists. And sickly distinctly against, um. You know, the difference of the, the, the countries A through Z that, Z that were already shared here and there. As voicings for humanity simultaneous body. As voicings for all of the individual bodies we know criminally foreign influence tactically illusions wrought force to pretend other. To an extent or be sensed. You know, and our group differences. Through that systems not paying attention to which generating all group differences to show us its individual difference. It is the only group difference that is an individual. As that individual that is not our species body, is not those species bodies. Is the identity of value slash value progression. That is generating these species bodies. And their value positive to itself here, as each self has relativity to positive and negative simultaneously. Or as it forced from here. It has a special difference too, which helps us show. To, to, helps us discern. It's the body of its identity to an extent. Variable extent. But where that is, it comes with its complete identity relationship to itself. Which is equally valued and the value of that. Which is equally valued inside the rest of its complete, it works perfect. Your complete identity. Black people's peer. Who disbelieves. Oh, and so in other words, please, on Facebook, a Joshua Julian. A Joshua Schumak is also with the Westfield Police Chief's retire. And the reported the intimate tie of one. And indirectly people involved with the, um. In intimate ties. Of a family of a police chief centron. Who has been with the people with the police forms stacking fake things in databases, fake ties, fake nature of ties to me since I was a kid. Faked police reports, you know, fake transcripts to make it look like I went to the police station and spoke it all with them. One time I got my fingerprints taken. And, and I didn't speak with them at all, they took me out of school too, and that class is increasingly involved with. People forced tricked her and persuaded with inter branch predicate acts. And with the principal child abuser, with medical and sexual offenders, he also recorded on Facebook and Anthony Agman. Anthony Agman increasingly has a bunch of doctors foreign and domestic. And people from my area and tied to my area like a filth lull. Is involved with them with whitening forensics and people hung up. To, to, to ride highway and where it runs into hang dog lane. And conjunctions to it and to that, like the Brolton traffic before the Harper. And along Route three. Are people that, that the foreign and domestic already influenced to spread lies about me, put fake ties, fake nature of ties to me. And at the same time with WFSB. They prevent writing, they're trying, they're hiding what I recorded them doing inter cities. And it, and they use methods of pretending that we had conversations with the people around us. When people, when individuals catch them. Cause the law dictates that only people could speak about the law. Per, you know, World Trade Center predicate acts against me, I could only speak it again, against me, even though I recorded it against other people. And they've recorded, they communicated other than was pretended for them by the inter branch and the intelligence. And that, and, and the news at the same time with overt criminal enterprises, private ones and with terrorists. They have, they have, they have self valued roles with uses of, um. Words like. Uh extremism and radical. With, with, with their logic, with their syntax and with their syntax nature. Where and how they need, they are shown needs to cover up. Roles with predicate acts with facts methods with a predicate acts with facts method slash S at countries A through Z. All individual voicings. Our collusion or sense, our grouped ones. And all simultaneous humanity voicings. Our collusions slash S or that is sensed and is, is countered. That's why I read, in other words, that's relative to why and how we have means to, one of the things we're gonna. Show the difference between criminal and citizen's natures of peace and peace. So we have needs, a, a nature of peace that is hyper criminal, hyper peace. Is not a criminal and citizen's nature of peace, but that has not been revealed yet since semi ancient times. Prepare our minds for soul. Boxings begin to hold. So please, they're trying to influence you and, and, and a whole bunch of people tied to, um. A Kevin Harris are involved with this Leahy family. And a Brian Silver and a bunch of people within the Britain Spirit Court, the Connecticut District Court. And Harper Courts before and after the World Trade Center attack. Have roles with all natures of investigations, investigators. And they're educators, these are educators of them too, recorded, confessed, demonstrated, confirmed. They're spreading fake ties, fake nature of ties and fake motivations. Which is also relative. Cause you guys already recorded yourselves, you know what's already recorded on a mass scale. Things that we were supposed to have blamed. Like the motivations for roles with slavery, their motivations with that human fact, human nature, breaching method. Other people pretend they have opinions legitimate to pretend other. That's also why and how we have to address how that which is true always, the, the only founder we know the name of is, is James Madison. And, and, and their description of the founders plural. Is other than we were directed by him and by themselves to describe that. The only founder we know the name of is James Madison. We're directed to understand and to observe how, how, why. He, he and no one else had free speech and everyone had to pretend other to an extent, otherwise that body was sensed. And it was adapted to again, even if that body was a majority of people. Even if that body was any unity as a country. Countries commonly be operated by the voices, the syntax, the nature. The function. Slash S of locations, areas and states. So we have these groupings, they call diplomacy diplomat, these are only criminal and citizen's natures of positive treatment. And the nature of debate is required, it, 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 it's reliant upon wars. Being and haven't been, cause it's one of the ways they fake. A through Z have baked integrity as voicing. Assigned by people. The suburbs were designed tactically de-natured to cause negative value, natural aggression acts in nature. Specifically to, to employ those demonstrations of that. While it was, nature was as at the same time demonstrating a human fact, human nature, breaching method is involved to people, doesn't use words. The breaching method built styles, needs, natures, the names of people's style of sciences, roles with them, reliance upon that. Only fathomed, only remembered. And through layers. In other words, since before America, modern religious messengers were, messengers were born. There are proofs. And it is known that since before America's founders were born. Individually grouped and together, all these countries fighting with the, they have already grouped individually grouped in, in together here. Collusion slash S with the time, the difference between the overt criminal enterprises, the private ones, the terrorists. The three rates of government. It, you know, in other words. Names that all natures of crime scenes, all natures of campuses exceptions. The difference of that, the all news communications, all criminally foreign influence. Collusion slash S to an extent, otherwise they were sensed. That's what really was is involved. So we have to pay attention to where the common is with the nature of debate. Or with the aggression, it's kept collusion slash S or, or sensing roles. Many ways we have to pay attention that we are not one identity at A through Z. At locations, areas and states, everywhere their species body is. Spoke about principles property or black property or black people's whites of eyes would not have been left out. Let alone that, our breaching method reassigned communications with it and roles and or sensing anyone not collusion slash S of fight. And our father founders themselves communicated for us to understand this. And they want to pretend it's debatable. This breaching method showed. Each age in nature, you know, the people are just gonna go into the sciences blindly. As a certain type of victim slash hyper victim, that logic, natures of logic. Styles of it to say, oh, I can't do anything about that. But then they become the only ones that can speak with the people up at the highest level. Still collusion slash S against the people and with the differences of guilt used to hide the hyper foreign. There was a hyper foreign that used remotely. The fact human nature, quality aspects in nature. Of the agencies that have been speaking about religions. And, and with the, with the terrorists as collusion slash S. To get over on the first part of the Quran and to get over on the first part of the Old Testament. To get over on the nature of religion too. Cause there were things that were left. Through cipher for us to decipher. That, and that can't be had, communicated about properly too unless we address. How, why the breaching method used criminal re-engineerings. Of the databases identities of relativity to the campus Marcias of the republic for which we stand. Which stands a bridge since semi ancient time. Black people's peer. We must, Marbury versus Madison has not been defended accurately. I'm not even a lawyer, we all do, I learned that from an accomplished pro se litigator. That. Real justice must satisfy all appearances of real justice. So increasingly inter cities campuses and people involved with the town lines. Are making confessions to, to, to the human, to, to citizens. Relative to how the, the branches of government and the intelligence tied to them. Makes and already made confessions to the hyper foreign. Which used confessions. Since before the church. Was founded. Before, before religious messages were, messengers were born. A breaching method was, was his measuring, maintaining. Other things, others ourselves blamed for things that it caused and keeps. Like the World Trade Center attack. Like the needs for agencies, like ICE. To try to counter things like problems with, with fentanyl. Riddled through countries suits and ties counters and exceptions that won't even let us use the hyper evidential, the hyper archaeological honest. There, there, there's a fake integrity individually grouped and together, the identity that the sciences have. Pretending things are debatable and not, then pretending their style of, we're good, we're good liars. And so people just ignore people that are pretending they're good liars. On a mass scale, there's only three branches of government clearer than day. How they keep them criminally foreign influence tactic illusions wrong and pretending other and getting away with it. And we could heal this in them, but we have to address how campuses A through Z. Here Anthony. Have roles with these principles replaced that nature itself communicates are true always. And, and where and how they are variable, so in other words. We're gonna pay attention, we're supposed to discern the whites of eyes, how the breaching method had roles with, 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 with the slavery method here. Reassign with black people's whites of eyes communicate. If you ask some kid. In a class, well, who said that? And they didn't read their book. Doesn't mean they don't know more than the teachers about this. And it doesn't, and, and that's leaving out how there have been roles with meth- methods of organized crimes. Like predicate acts methods, wire crime methods. Collusion slash S with all natures of crime scenes and the difference of it being there. Or at other places, other places, the people's houses, next thing, conjunctions to everything, the difference of that. This breaching method has roles, that's one of the things you guys have roles with when you have replaced. And have roles of voicing replaced. Proper short words. And proper behavior and nature behind. And nature behind words, short words. Regarding things like. These principal things. Boxings. So. They're having a merry scanlan, repeat things involved with people from my grammar school. And 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 um. Middle school that I never even saw on on those campuses. Couple of them, they tried to make a real couple of quick fake exceptions, increasingly people involved with predicate acts on my street. And with the confessions of the Weatherfield Police. And involved with this Phil Fallo and their roles putting fake ties and fake nature of ties to me. Communications. Slash hyper communications. As we can discern, we're gonna discern needs. To to accept this phrase. So please get WFSP, please get me off the conversations with you. And the Weatherfield Police. When I was a kid, when I was adult, they attach other kids to fake ties, fake nature of ties to others too. They have collusions with names next to their location, your location too, WFSP. These same names were out at collusion slash S at next to Fox, Connecticut News too. And next to Fox and W T N H. They're also, you know, refusing to identify themselves. And faking their motives about why, how they want mail or 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 wire, wire communications. Or digital, because they already faked and changed digital wire evidences and mail. Fake things, fake conversations through the mail, fake transcripts roles and cover ups were are used. One of the things that the FBI has self valued roles with. Where and how they are also sentencing for the breaching method. Because they are worse than criminal incompetence, worse than war crimes, self valued roles. Sensing for the breaching method too regarding the predicate acts for facts here. So involved. But we could heal them, if anyone will follow mandated law, please follow mandated law WFSP. You guys are obligated to to communicate with the the families of the kids and the kids about this. They're making them have self valued roles where they're using crime methods where they're lying to them about what happened at crime scenes. Just so they could speak with people, just so they could fake conversations even if they don't speak with them. Just so they could get away with all the exploitations of people, either that you're support the police or against. You either support their changing and faking what people say about predicate acts as collusion slash S. With obligations to demonstrate the collusions at those locations. Multiple police departments through administrations are being, have been used remotely criminally foreign influence tactically delusions raw. There are, there are still criminally foreign influence ways to pretend that we have to prove that, prove that even though it's recorded. And they have been using all that comes before them to hide the proofs of that for the breaching method, how it uses them remote remotely. Since founding. Pounding drums and others communicated for James Madison and our Native American founders. Even if they didn't agree with that group as the colonists, they were grouped with them by nature. But there are proofs that they were Native Americans that were also enabled enough to become. The the counter extortion only capable of being of James Madison and then behind that. To counter extort even George Washington, have them help, George Washington helped them counter extort. At key locations like for right before the last battle of the Revolutionary War. He had to come and counter extort but leave slavery entrenched. George Washington and and James Madison and our founders. The only one we know the name of is James Madison. But they they wanted us to explain. How and why. Even though they were involved with the extortion of George Washington, everyone roles with slavery left northern colonies and southern colonies. Had to leave that entrenched there. Northern colonies and southern colonies plural. And they had to set, the the breaching method settles every human difference hurt sickly distinctly. Male, female. And and everyone roles pretending other and that's with the nature of the culture, the culture as criminal and cities' nature. Slash hyper criminal and cities' nature. And the value of it pretended other than that. And capable increasingly of affording short words. By the identity of all things to the extent we concern. Variable, but it comes with its complete identity of relationship to itself unchanging constantly. And the only increasing value of that equally. Have we observed. So W T N H also has. More child abusers roles with organized crimes with the kids. And pretending other, people with the name O'Neill, who are educators with West Hartford. They are increasingly involved with white forensics with state police, military foreign and domestic. Family members from border states and like see how they're. Those people who escaped from the Clinton correctional facility. They also have Facebook and Weatherfield Police and the Britain Spirit Court and Harper Courts. Involved with predicate accesses before the World Trade Center attack before Facebook was founded. Inter campuses and the names associated with them have roles with databases involved since before computers. Predator acts method slash S. Please get them on paper, one name in sequence, watch them, they know that the breaching method is showing them they already made criminally foreign influence. Tactically delusions wrought readings of statutes of precedent. And relativity to. Exceptions, exception nature and a special difference. Which shows they have to too, self value pretending, well, we we relative, you're speaking about a theory of some guy, no, I'm speaking about relativity. Black pupils. We have black pupils' whites of eyes, it's about relativity slash hyper relativity. It is time. She campus name, return, I'll trade.